Hi Nicholas Pardue, hereby reconvene the Board of Education Regular Meeting in open session at 5:09 PM. We have a quorum present with all Board members in attendance. Please note that this meeting is being both recorded and livestreamed for public viewing. I would like to welcome the community members in attendance this evening. As a reminder, governing board meetings are a business meeting of the Board, held in public. And although public participation is encouraged, it is not the Public's meeting. It is the duty of the Board President and/or the Clerk to maintain an orderly, respectful, and peaceful meeting where all perspectives, voices, and opinions are welcome. Please refrain from speaking while another person has the floor, including any other sound effects. The Board did not take any formal action in closed session. I'd like to call on Ms. Nancy Young for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the best law with liberty and justice for all.
Item D3, Approval of Agenda, Calls for Motion.
So moved. Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries 4-0. Item E1, I call on Chevalier Middle School Principal, Mr. Jason Hamm.
Good evening.
I'd like to take this time to showcase our wonderful Unified Students. So if I can, please have Victoria, Clayton, Hensley, Evan, Harper, Dominic, and Jack to come on up, please. I should have a slide that I'm gonna start. So Unified at Chevalier, we are so proud to share a glimpse of our Unified Panther Program, which brings students with and without disabilities together through Unified Physical Education, Unified Art, and Unified Leadership. And here are your students.
In Unified PE, students participate together in physical activities that promote teamwork, communication, and respect. What's most powerful is watching students cheer each other on, whether it's during a basketball game, a fitness challenge, or just a class warm-up. The class has transformed our campus culture by showing what inclusion looks like in action. Every student is valued, every effort is celebrated.
Hi, my name is Clayton, and I like you because it is fun. I get to meet new friends, and my buddy Victoria cheers for me and my game.
Our Unified Art Class brings together students of all abilities to create side-by-side. We focus on projects that represent kindness, inclusion, and school pride. Things like murals, posters, and collaborative art displays around campus. What's really special is how the class builds friendship and confidence. Everyone contributes in their own way, and every piece of art becomes a bigger story, showing that creativity and inclusion go hand-in-hand.
In Unified Leadership, students work together to make sure every voice is heard and every student feels included. Partners and athletes collaborate on school events like Spirit Weeks, Assemblies, and Unified Sports Days. They're learning how to lead with empathy, teamwork, and respect, not just for our Unified Community, but for the whole school. The impact has been incredible. Our students are changing the culture of our campus through inclusion and connection.
Thank you so much.
I would just like to say, Chevalier, baby.
Great job.
All right. Next up, I'd like to call on Muria Canyon Academy Principal, Mr. Matt Bean.
Good evening, Dr. Andres. Good evening, School Board. Good evening, guests. Tonight, I have the privilege to introduce you to our MCA Leadership Group. We are led by Ms. Amelia Kowalski. We have an amazing group of students that really step out of their comfort zone to be great role models on our campus and to lead campus events, which have been very impactful to create a great culture on our campus. So, without further ado, Ms. Kowalski.
Thank you. We have a slide, too.
Somewhere. Click. Remember I said you're in charge of the click?
I got it, I got it, guys, okay. All right, what is leadership at MCA? Good evening, I'm Amelia Kowalski, and I've had the privilege of serving as a leadership advisor here at MCA since starting the program four years ago. Leadership at MCA looks a little different than it does at the comprehensive high schools. Many of our students choose MCA because it's small and offers a more personal environment. They're not looking to get involved in the traditional school activities. Our goal through this program is to help students, every student, feel connected, even in a school with a transient population. We want our students to come to school and to stay because they feel a sense of belonging and purpose. Our motto, soar, self-aware, optimistic, accountable, and resilient, is the heart of everything we do. Through Leadership, we teach students real-world life skills. We help them succeed both inside and outside the classroom. Whether it's learning how to present an SEL lesson, practicing professional etiquette at a business dinner, or organizing campus events like Fun Fridays, Dress-Up Days, Prom, and Grad Night, our students are gaining confidence, responsibility, and the ability to lead with heart. At MCA, Leadership is more than just building connections, culture, and community. It's about empowering students, leaders to truly soar and prepare every student to be life-ready. I'm gonna hand it over to Gavin.
Good evening, Board. It's pretty great to be back. I was pretty excited when I first was told I was gonna be up here again. Pretty bummed out that I'm not here every month again, but it is what it is. But, you know, so I'm supposed to give a quick little journey of my life, pretty much, of how I got to MCA. So, if you didn't know who I was, and you took a quick glance at me, I don't think people would, you know, think that I'm in Leadership. But, and I wasn't in Leadership when I was at a regular high school, and I obviously, you know, didn't do too great. I was, you know, in a difficult position, but I ended up having to transfer to MCA. And it only took me four months, about four months, until Mrs. Kowalski, let's say, gave me a gentle nudge into Leadership. And that pretty much means she forced me into Leadership. So, yeah, Ms. Kowalski forced me into Leadership, and, you know, I'm very grateful for the opportunity. I never would have thought I'd be in a Leadership position at a regular high school, but MCA pretty much saw my potential, and they saw me for who I really am, and they pretty much built me to who I am today. And after being in Leadership for a little over a year, I would probably tell you right now, it's probably one of the greatest decisions that I've made in a while. It's impacted me in so many different ways that I can't even describe. And it's not just me, but my other two leaders and all the other leaders, we all love it. It's very fun, you know, being in a Leadership role that we play in. We are role models for the school, and we pretty much paved the way on what it means to be an MCA Phoenix. So, pretty much, we have what we like to call non-traditional leaders. Like I said, none of us three were in Leadership roles at our regular, at our old high schools, and MCA gave us those opportunities to be in those roles today. And we pretty much, being in Leadership, we do redefine who we are. Mrs. Kowalski is a big help with that. She is very strict on being perfect, well, not perfect, I would say, not perfect. That's the wrong phrase. I mean, like, she, she, what's the right? She pushes us to always do better, I would say. I don't know why I said perfect, okay, just forget I said that. But, she really does push us, and she pushes us to be not only, you know, great students, but greater, just great people on the inside and out. And believing in yourself is something, believing in myself is something that I really didn't do. I never believed in myself before I came to MCA. I just had no sense of direction, what I wanted to do. And MCA gave me those opportunities and pretty much made a new me, and I'm grateful for that opportunity. And obviously, you know, like I said, she helps us build skills that we didn't have before, like etiquette and everything else that comes in those lines. And one thing that I'm very proud of for our staff is that they really see us for who we are, and to them, we're not just a student ID number, which obviously is harder at a bigger high school to get to know every single student. But at this school, obviously, you know, it's easier for them to do it, and they do a great job. Every single day, I have conversations with every single staff member, almost every staff member. I walk into school, and they're telling me, hey Gavin, like, what's up Gavin? Like, how you doing? They know what I'm doing on the weekends, they know what I've been up to. It's just overall Leadership and MCA in total is just a great place to be, and I'm truly blessed to be in this opportunity, and I love it here. But, so, I'm gonna hand it over to one of my good friends, Mr. Adrian. So Adrian, take it away.
Hi, everybody, I'm Adrian. I'm a senior at MCA. I'm gonna tell you all a little bit about myself. So, originally, I started at Vista, but I definitely made some poor and immature choices. And I got sent to the Carpe Diem program at MCA during my freshman year. And I took time to really find myself there. And the next coming year, my sophomore year, I decided to stay and build myself because I really appreciated the small campus, you know? Like Gavin said, all the staff know you by name, they don't know you by a number, and they really, like, they're really supportive. And so I decided to stay and got my grades up, stopped making poor and immature choices. And then, starting in my junior year, I decided to join Leadership by recommendation of one of my teachers, and Ms. Kowalski. And, sorry, one second. I decided to genuinely try in school and really push myself. And then I, sorry, then I decided that I really liked MCA after that, especially being in Leadership. So I decided to stay again this year. And then, I just really appreciated the campus, and I liked, because, I mean, obviously, you guys may not see it today, but I am very talkative and I am very, like, social. I'm just a little nervous, but MCA really gave me, like...
Our campus culture by showing what inclusion looks like in action. Every student is valued, every effort is celebrated.
Hi, my name is Graham and I like like you by because it is fun. I get to meet new friends and my buddy Victoria cheers for me and my game.
Our Unified Art Class brings together students of all abilities to create side by side. We focus on projects that represent kindness, inclusion, and school pride. Things like murals, posters, and collaborative art displays around campus. What's really special is how the class builds friendship and confidence. Everyone contributes in their own way and every piece of art becomes a bigger story, showing that creativity and inclusion go hand in hand.
In Unified Leadership, students work together to make sure every voice is heard and every student feels included. Partners and athletes collaborate on school events like Spirit Weeks, Assemblies, and Unified Sports Days. They're learning how to lead with empathy, teamwork, and respect, not just for our unified community but for the whole school. The impact has been incredible. Our students are changing the culture of our campus through inclusion and connection.
Thank you so much.
I would just like to say, Chavela, baby.
Great job.
All right. Next up, I'd like to call on Muria Canyon Academy Principal, Mr. Matt Bean.
Good evening, Dr. Andres. Good evening, School Board. Good evening, guests. Tonight, I have the privilege to introduce you to our MCA Leadership Group. We are led by Ms. Amelia Kowalski. We have an amazing group of students that really step out of their comfort zone to be great role models on our campus and to lead campus events which have been very impactful to create a great culture on our campus. So, without further ado, Ms. Kowalski.
Thank, we have a slide too.
Somewhere. Click. Remember I said you're in charge of the click?
I got it, I got it, guys, okay. All right, what is leadership at MCA? Good evening, I'm Amelia Kowalski and I've had the privilege of serving as a leadership advisor here at MCA since starting the program four years ago. Leadership at MCA looks a little different than it does at the comprehensive high schools. Many of our students choose MCA because it's small and offers a more personal environment. They're not looking to get involved in the traditional school activities. Our goal through this program is to help students, every student, feel connected even in a school with a transient population. We want our students to come to school and to stay because they feel a sense of belonging and purpose. Our motto, SOAR, self-aware, optimistic, accountable, and resilient, is the heart of everything we do. Through leadership, we teach students real-world life skills. We help them succeed both inside and outside the classroom. Whether it's learning how to present an SEL lesson, practicing professional etiquette at a business dinner, or organizing campus events like Fun Fridays, Dress-Up Days, Prom, and Grad Night, our students are gaining confidence, responsibility, and the ability to lead with heart. At MCA, leadership is more than just building connections, culture, and community. It's about empowering students, leaders to truly soar and prepare every student to be life-ready. I'm gonna hand it over to Gavin.
Good evening, Board. It's pretty, pretty great to be back. I was pretty excited when I first was told I was gonna be up here again. Pretty bummed out that I'm not here every month again, but it is what it is. But, you know, so I'm supposed to, you know, give a, give a quick little, you know, journey of my, of my life, pretty much, of how I got to MCA. So, if you, if you didn't know who I was and you took a quick glance at me, I don't think people would, you know, think that I'm in a leadership. But, and I, I wasn't in leadership when I was at a regular high school. And I obviously, you know, didn't do too great. I was, you know, in a, in a difficult position. But I ended up having to transfer to MCA. And it only took me four months, about, about four months until Mrs. Kowalski, let's say, gave me a gentle nudge into leadership. And that pretty much means she forced me into leadership. So, yeah, Ms. Kowalski forced me into leadership. And, you know, I'm very, I'm very grateful for the opportunity. I never would have thought I'd be in a leadership position at a regular high school. But MCA pretty much saw my potential and they saw me for who I really am. And they, they pretty much built me to who I am today. And after being in leadership for a little over a year, it, I would probably tell you right now, it's probably one of the greatest decisions that I've made in a while. It's, it's impacted me in so many different ways that I can't even describe. And it's not just me, but my other two leaders and all the other leaders, we all love it. It's, it's very fun, you know, being in a leadership, leadership role that, that we, that we play in. We are role models for the school and we pretty much paved the way on what it, what it means to be a, to MCA Phoenix. So, pretty much, we have what we like to call non-traditional leaders. Like I said, none of us three were in leadership roles at our regular, at our old high schools. And MCA gave those, gave those, gave us those opportunities to be in those roles today. And we pretty much, being in leadership, we, we do redefine who we are. Mrs. Kowalski is a big help in that. She is very strict on being perfect, well, not perfect, I would say. Not perfect. That's the, that's the wrong, that's the wrong phrase. I mean, like, she, she, oh, what's the right? She pushes us to always do better, I would say. That, I don't know why I said perfect, that, that, okay, just forget I said that. But she, she really does push us and she pushes us to be not only, you know, great students, but greater, just great people on the inside and out. And believing in yourself is something, believing in myself is something that I really didn't do. I never believed in myself before I came to MCA. I just had no sense of direction, what I wanna do. And MCA gave me those opportunities and pretty much made a new me. And I'm, you know, grateful for that opportunity. And obviously, you know, we, like I said, she helps us build, build school, skills that we didn't have before, like etiquette and everything else like that comes in those lines. And one thing that I'm very, like, proud of for our staff is that they really see us for who we are. And to them, we're not just a, a student ID number, which obviously is harder at a bigger high school to get to know every single student. But at this school, obviously, you know, it's easier for them to do it and they do a great job every single day. I have, you know, conversations with every single staff member, almost every staff member. I walk into school and they, they're telling me, "Hey Gavin, like, what's up Gavin? Like, how you doing?" They know what I'm doing on the weekends, they know what I've been up to. It's just overall leadership and MCA in total is just a great place to be. And I'm, I'm truly blessed to be in this opportunity and I love it here. But, so, I'm gonna hand it over to, to one of my good friends, Mr. Adrian. So Adrian, take it away.
Hi, everybody. I'm Adrian. I'm a senior at MCA. I'm gonna tell you all a little bit about myself. So, originally, I started at Vista, but I definitely made some poor and immature choices. And I got sent to the Carpe Diem program at MCA and during my freshman year. And I took time to, like, really find myself there. And the next coming year, my sophomore year, I decided to stay and, like, build myself because I really appreciated the small campus, you know? Like Gavin said, all the staff know you by name. They don't know you by a number. And they really like, they're really supportive. And so I decided to stay and got my grades up, stopped making poor and immature choices. And then, starting in my junior year, I decided to join leadership by recommendation of one of my teachers and Ms. Kowalski. And, um, sorry, one second. I decided to, like, just genuinely try in school and, like, really push myself. And then I, um, sorry. Then I, um, decided that I really liked MCA after that, especially being in leadership. So I decided to stay again this year. And then I just really appreciated the campus and I liked, because, I mean, obviously you guys may not see it today, but I damn very talkative and I am very, like, social. Um, I'm just a little nervous. But, um, MCA really gave me, like, the chance to use my talkativeness, like, talkativeness and my socialness and everything that I have and, like, bubbly personality to really, like, connect with kids in a positive way that may have done, like, the same choices or may have done things like that that I did. And I can help, like, kinda guide them and, like, show them, like, not, I wouldn't say the proper way, but the better way to connon themselves so they're life-ready. And then if you see us leaders, we go by our school motto, SOAR. So, being self-aware, so knowing who we are and how we can grow, being optimistic, seeing our opportunities instead of obstacles, holding ourselves accountable, showing up and following through, and being resilient, bouncing back stronger every time. And these skills prepare us not just for school, but for life. I'm gonna pass this on to my other leader, Amora.
Hi. Um, my name is Amora. I'm a senior at MCA. I transferred my sophomore year and I also started my high school journey off at Vista Marietta. But I was dealing with some medical issues that didn't allow me to be fully present in a traditional school setting, which caused me to be homeschooled most of my freshman year. Being homeschooled kinda put me in a bubble and I was kind of scared to get back into a regular school setting. But then I had the option to transfer to a smaller, more inclusive school and, like, MCA, which in this short amount of time, I have found, like Gavin said, a sense of belonging and a sense of direction being at MCA. And I decided to join leadership second semester of my junior year, which was last year, 'cause I was trying to push myself out of my shell and be more involved in, on campus and on our activities and be more social with people on campus. And, you know, help with activities, like I said. And what we help with in MCA Leadership is we help new student orientation and their campus tours. We organize our Campus Fun Fridays. We plan fun prom nights and grad nights. We usually take our seniors to Six Flags, but this year we're going to Universal. We run our school-wide events like dress, lunchtime karaoke, Dress-Up Days, and house games. And most importantly, we help every student feel proud to be a Phoenix. On our picture up there, we have one of our Dress-Up Days, which was Twin Day. We have our MCA Prom. And then on our bottom left, we have our seniors going to Six Flags from these previous years. And then on our bottom right, we have last year, a couple of our seniors, me included, got to go to Universal to preview it for this year's Grad Night and we decided we're gonna go, so, yeah.
All right, so thank you, but like our last quote says, like a true Phoenix, every MCA student has the power to rise. Sometimes they just need someone to light the fire within them. Thank you, guys.
That was amazing.
I did wanna say to you students, and I, I think same to the Chavela students, you guys are excellent role models. And I, I, I happen to teach seniors myself and I try to remind seniors all the time, you are role models just by showing resiliency and, and in this case, your leadership and how you interact with everybody. And that's true with the Chavela students. I think you guys do such a fantastic job and you really demonstrated that tonight. You guys all did a great job. And I also wanted to commend Mr. Bean and Mrs. Kowalski for, that's a great environment to have such a testimony to what you guys, your leadership and what you've done there at MCA, so, good job.
Great, great job. So, Amora, Gavin, and Adrian. All right, listen, there are some adults in this room who, who will never get on a podium and speak. That is a really, like, really seriously brave thing to do. And you guys didn't just come and speak, you literally knocked it out of the water. Presentation was excellent. I mean, communication skills are amazing. Great job.
Before we move on, just real quick, Mr. Gavin Larson, would you stand up, please? I'm gonna put you on the spot. Gavin, you don't need to speak. Gavin is the Student of the Month for MCA this month. All right, I just had to call you out.
Moving on, we're moving on to item E2, which is Public Comments. Before we get started with that, at this time, the Government Board welcomes public comments. You guys have a great night.
Thanks, Moms and Dads for coming.
Yeah, exactly.
I was just telling Christine, they brought their whole families. That's amazing.
Okay, back to you.
All right. Individuals wishing to address the Board are requested to complete a request to address the Board of Education card located at the entrance to the Boardroom and submit it to the Executive Assistant. In accordance with Board Bylaw 9323, individual speakers shall be allowed up to three minutes to address the Board on each agenda or non-agenda item. The Board shall limit the total time for public input on each item to 20 minutes. The Board shall take no action or discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda except as authorized by law. With that being said, first up, I have Emily Brooks, followed by, well, Emily Brooks, if you don't mind speaking on both your issues while you're up? And then Chris Schultz. Yes, that's fine.
Good evening. As some of you already know, my name is Emily. I'm the parent of two kids in the district. They both attend MVHS. We've actually been in the district since pre-K. And I'm here to talk tonight specifically about my daughter, Amaya. I try to keep my kids out of this and address issues more broadly before the Board. But this time, some decisions you made have directly affected her. And so I wanna speak about her directly tonight. And apologies in advance, Amaya, if you ever see this video. Okay. Amaya's a freshman this year at MV. She's a model student who is respectful towards teachers and staff. She works hard, she gets good grades, and she's literally never been in trouble. I was shocked to learn that she was assigned a detention last month. The reason why? Bathrooms. Amaya's been having issues since the beginning of the school year because there simply are not enough bathrooms on campus to accommodate all 1,000-plus female students to use between classes. Over the entire first month of school, I swear, every time I asked her about her day, the first thing she had to say had to do with bathroom access. She kept coming home with stomach aches, either because she couldn't urinate or, or go number two at school. There simply wasn't enough time. She got constipated. I had to buy special teas, change her diet so that she could have some relief from that. Another time, she got her period at school, bled through her pants, had to have her brother come down the hall and give her a sweatshirt because she wasn't allowed to go to the bathroom to change in time. As a mother, I hope, I hope you listen and understand. I've already encouraged her to plan ahead as much as possible so that things don't become dire. But that's not always possible. I can't help but think that a lot of the problems she's faced over the past few weeks could be avoided if more bathrooms were available to students or policies changed to allow greater access. Students shouldn't have to suffer from a full bladder, nearly wetter self, bleed through her jeans, or come home constipated day after day because the school doesn't have enough bathrooms to accommodate all its students. Now, as some of you know, I'm an attorney, so I like to dig into the minutia of this stuff. According to my reading of the relevant California statutes, schools are required to have one bathroom for every 25 female students. I haven't gone so far as to count all the number of stalls at MV and Amaya's not willing to do it for me. So I don't know the exact population of female students either, but from my rough estimate, having been on campus recently for Back-to-School Night, we only have about, uh, maybe 10 stalls for all 1,000 students sometimes, maybe double it times 20. There are only three main bathrooms on campus, right? Three main student bathrooms. One of them is permanently locked all year long for private student access. That leaves two bathrooms. There isn't a single open bathroom for students in the main building down the hall from your wife's classroom. There's no bathroom there. And so when Amaya has to use the restroom after your wife's class, she has to leave, go all the way across the quad to the bathrooms by the library, and then come all the way back over. She's been late a couple times, that's why she got the detention. She was late to class twice because she had to use the bathroom and couldn't get back in time. Recently, that third bathroom was locked. Maybe a plumbing issue, I'm not sure what the reason was. That left one bathroom. One bathroom, 10 stalls approximately, for 1,000 girls to use during the school day. That is simply unacceptable. And then for them to get punished as a result, mind-boggling. Luckily, I was able to reach out to school staff and they promptly canceled the detention, took it off of her record. She was terrified it would go on to colleges as she got older. So that was a relief. And they're trying to relax the policies to allow more flexibility so students can use the restroom during class, et cetera. But that doesn't change the underlying problem, which is that there simply aren't enough facilities on campus for all of our girls to use. And that comes down to funding. So Mr. Deep House mentioned that part of the issue here has to do with the, the Facilities Master Plan, that they do intend to build or to construct a private student bathroom, maybe closer to the nurse's office for the special-needs students, to open up the restrooms in the main building again. But that can't happen without funding. And as we learned at the last, at the budget meeting or the, the bond meeting, right now, we're just doing maintenance. There's no room in the budget for building, which means there's no room for girls to go to the restroom at MV right now. And that's unacceptable. So, I'll move into my second comment. I realize that took a little longer than I intended. As you're looking to replace Ms. Munoz on the Board and looking for someone to, to fill that spot, please think about the practical implications of the policies you make. If you pick someone who's just going to continue pursuing this partisan agenda that I keep trying to bring to your attention and pursue policies that do not affect the day-to-day, literal, physical needs of the students in this district, whether or not they can go to the bathroom. If that isn't your focus in choosing to fill that seat, I don't know what you're doing up there. Leave the Supreme Court politics out of it. Leave, you know, challenging Newsom and California and all the, the rules you don't agree with. You have to follow those, whether you like them or not, until they're changed at the legislative issue. But what you have the power to do as Board members, sitting up there on that dais week after week, is make things better for our students today. Even if her detention was canceled, Amaya still has to miss class. If she does go to the restroom, she's missing two, three, four, or five minutes of class by the time she gets back. No student should have to miss class time just to be able to go to the bathroom. It's unacceptable. You guys need to do better. So, replace Yvonne. Put someone in that seat who can look at the practicalities, who knows how to read the budgets and work on the contracts and do what our students need to do to succeed. Leave the politics out of it. I challenge you to choose someone who opposes you, who's not in line with you. That's the way to, to reach true consensus. You don't want group think. Find someone who will, who will speak up and challenge you and then come to agreements, negotiate. That's the way it should work. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
All right, Chris Schultz, followed by Chris Tomasi.
All right, good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Chris Schultz. Well, many of you know me in a variety of capacities, including as a father of three, a parent of MVUSD graduates, and as a teacher in the district. I'd like to speak to you as an elected member of the Marietta Educator Association's Executive Board this evening. As of late, there's been a lot of divisive, simplistic rhetoric in this room about constituents. To be clear about that transactional and political term, constituents are people in one's trustee area who voted for you, voted for someone else, or even didn't vote at all, though they may have been registered to vote. Reflecting on results in that context should humble rather than embolden anybody on the dais. And the idea is that as a trustee, one serves all stakeholders in a given TA in the interest of the larger school community. Stakeholders run the gamut from students and parents to renters, homeowners, and local businesses. Some set individuals are concurrently teachers, nurses, speech pathologists in MVUSD and elsewhere, a portion MEA members. It would do all here well to think and to speak in terms of community rather than constituency and to act with that in mind throughout the process of filling the Board vacancy for Trustee Area 3. This brings me to my second point, control and tenor of meetings that happen in this room. Because tonight's Board meeting is a regular meeting, public comment is open to any topic that falls within the Board's purview. In special Board meetings, however, public comments must be limited specifically to agendized items. Public comment during special Board meetings requires particular care on the Board President's part because early intervention and redirection for speakers who may seem to be straying can maintain the integrity of the meeting. Without such attention, and especially on topics about which people are passionate and have differing views, the Board risks the broader audience interrupting to the tune of a procedural reminder. Such was the unfortunate case of an interruption not long ago that resulted in an MVUSD parent choosing not to finish delivering the balance of his public comments. Keep in mind, only a handful of our over 1,000 members were in the room and did not wholly comprise the audience. Even so, we have taken up the issue with our membership by providing guidance on decorum in public meetings while still advocating that they speak their piece during public comment. We hope the Board has been equally reflective. Finally, let's not forget that oftentimes we have a student Board member on the dais, which should give pause to everyone in the room by reminding us why we are here and that we are role models. Being thin-skinned and petty is unbecoming. So are wildly political diatribes in this space. So is making sweeping, evaluative statements from the dais suggesting educators, particularly MEA members, who care enough to be at School Board meetings are somehow activists in a way different from elected School Board members. Being an educator is tough. Being a nonpartisan elected official is tough. What ought not be tough is getting past all the distractions and down to the work. Thank you.
Chris Tomasi, followed by Angie Clay.
At your last meeting, Eleanor stated she voted against the $800,000 mental health grant because after the funding runs out, the district would be liable for paying for the program. This is not true. The grant was to build capacity for mental health programs, including setting up a system with outside providers so that services for students would be billed to the parents' insurance. The grant is flexible and that the district does not need to continue any service when the grant money runs out. Indeed, my research showed many options available for either continuing or discontinuing services. And Dr. Andres made it clear that your other concern about notifying parents was easily accomplished by requiring parents to attend the students' first counseling session. So Eleanor, you have no reason to oppose this grant and I ask that you place this item on the agenda for reconsideration. Nick, you keep referring to anyone who has a different opinion than you as a partisan. You lump parents, grandparents, and teachers who see things different than you as liberal Democrats. The parents who come here to speak represent their children and want a quality education for them and for the Board not to waste money on ideological battles. You are the one who creates partisanship in this district. I come here to talk to you as a 21-year Board member on this Board who worked, excuse me, very hard to grow the district into the excellence we have today. I am not a partisan. I was a lifelong Republican until a couple years ago when I changed to no party preference. In each of my elections, I was endorsed by the Riverside Republican Party and I was also endorsed by MEA. School Boards are supposed to be nonpartisan and a good Board member is on that dais only because they support the students and student learning. The current Board majority is focused on using your position and the district to promote political posturing. During my time on the Board, there were plenty of state and federal issues we could have been involved with, but we focused on student learning. You approve Board policies that violate state or federal law and use district money to hire attorneys to defend your position. These actions have cost the district tens of thousands of dollars so far with other costs pending. This does not include the time staff take away from their job of improving student achievement. I speak at your meetings because I don't want you to destroy what I and so many others have worked so hard for years to grow. Thank you.
Angie Clay, followed by Julia Arcure.
Good evening. My name is Angie Clay and this is my 33rd year as an educator in our district. I've had the pleasure of teaching students in grades three through 12 and I'm currently a teacher at Vista Marietta High School. In my four decades, that was hard to type, of employment in the district, I have had the honor of working with incredible groups of not only students, but families, classified, certificated administrators, as well as district management. I have continually pursued my own postgraduate education, pursued independent staff development, as well as served in many site-level and district leadership roles. I have also the distinction of holding the district's current High School Teacher of the Year. My experience has shown me that students, parents, staff can best realize their full potential in an atmosphere of mutual respect, care, and understanding. A belief that is also directly stated as one of the Board's beliefs. I'm here this evening to remind the Board of its core beliefs and mission to express my concern and disappointment with the way in which the Board is conducting itself in terms of fostering that mutual respect and understanding. The Board's governance standards state, "Board members shall assume a collective responsibility for building unity and creating positive organizational culture." for building unity and creating positive organizational culture." The district's mission, of course, is to inspire every student to think, to learn, to achieve, and to care. It is evident that the board is collectively forgetting its mission and beliefs, raising up partisanship in its nonpartisan role, focusing on national issues, amplifying outside factors which allow increased board election spending for some, and increasing political polarization. Is it the board's belief and mission to have student advisory members leave board meetings crying? Is it the board member's belief and mission to have community member comments discounted as not representative of everyone? Is it the board's belief and mission to demonize its own teachers and our union? Is it the board's belief and mission to use faulty logic and scare tactics to push ideas that are in opposition to or have nothing to do with inspiring every student to think, to learn, to achieve, and to care? I am asking the board to collectively go back to your why, to focus on our core beliefs, to make the mission of inspiring every student to think, to learn, to achieve, and to care at the forefront of not only every decision, but personal response during the board meeting as well. You have a collective responsibility to do such. It is a fact that we serve all students and all families from all backgrounds, period. There should be no value judgment in that. Stop the rhetoric that is not only faulty but incompatible with our beliefs and our mission.
Your time has expired.
Collectively, you have set, you need to set a better example. Thank you.
Thank you.
My foot fell asleep. Sorry, guys. I'm going to disagree with everything she said. I, I've been in the district, this is my 23rd year, and I support you guys. And I want to thank you because we are not being supported by a lot of people in our district, our union. And I would like to say that it's partly our fault because we don't get involved, our voice is not heard, because we don't want to be called a bigot. I don't want to be called transphobic. I love my students. I love every single one of them. Every single one of them deserves a safe place to dress out, to go to the bathroom. And when I am going to talk about this, I'm talking about when I went to middle school, actually, I went to high school. We didn't have a middle school where I am, but most people go to middle school and they dress out for the first time in front of people. Can you guys remember how terrifying it was to dress out in front of people that are just like you? I want our transgender kids to be safe. They should not have to dress out with boys if they don't want to, or girls if they don't want to. But what about our students who feel uncomfortable dressing out in front of them? How come we are worried about 2% when we have a lot of people who are uncomfortable? Girls are going home upset. I represent a lot of teachers. I represent a lot of employees of the district, and I represent a lot of parents. There are not just hundreds of us. There are thousands of us that are afraid to come here and speak because of what we see go on when we're watching this at home. I have watched people get booed. I've watched people get laughed at. And you know what? I know I'm going to go to school tomorrow, and I'm going to be a target because I decided I was going to stand up. But my voice will be heard, and I will support anyone else, anybody that has the courage to come up here and start standing up for our rights. My union, they are not aligning with my beliefs. So we need to go to our union meetings and get involved. If you want your voice heard and you want things to start coming into the middle, let's find a middle ground. Let's stop name-calling. Let's come together as a community. That is what our kids need. Our kids need to see us come together and find solutions that work for everybody. It's not about Republican. It's not about Democrat. It is about our students. We love our students. We need to do better for them. Thank you. And thank you, guys, for what you've done.
Thank you. Employee Organization Reports. Ms. Lisa Murray, MEA President.
Sorry, I didn't realize that was it for comments. Okay. I wasn't ready. Good evening, Dr. Anderson, trustees. It's been a busy month since we last met for a regular board meeting. I was able to attend the first Student of the Month breakfast at the new Early Learning Center, as well as the Middle School Unified Bocce Ball Tournament at Thompson. I have had a chance to pop into a couple of PLT lead trainings and visit a few of the elementary math curriculum trainings. I attended the first D-LAC meeting, the first SPED Task Force meeting, and the 25th anniversary celebration at Coal Canyon Elementary. In addition, MEA was just inducted into the Marietta Rotary Club, and we are excited to work with them to support the Field of Honor, Pride Camp, Mil Vets, and Share the Harvest. As I have mentioned in the last two regular board meetings, MEA's focus areas this year are adverse student behaviors, unmanageable class sizes and caseloads, and the lack of efficient time to do our jobs to the best of our abilities. Again, tonight, I want to address those adverse student behaviors, particularly their cause and what we can do right here, right now, to enact positive change in regard to student behavior in this district. I have heard it said in this room that the reason students are misbehaving at the level they are is because SB 274 requires school districts in California to provide supports and interventions rather than suspending students for willful defiance. Since this bill has garnered so much attention in this room, I want to make it clear that CTA did not, in fact, support this bill. With a quick Google search, I was able to find the lists of supporters and opponents for each California Senate and Assembly Bill. On the list for SB 274, there are 80 supporting groups, not one of which is the California Teachers Association. I also found it interesting that there is not a single opponent listed for SB 274. When I have time, I may do some more research on the bill itself and why exactly that might be, that no groups of any political affiliation formally opposed it. But for now, I'd rather also point out that this behavior problem is not just a California problem. These adverse, disrespectful, defiant, and disruptive behaviors are happening in schools across this nation. I have friends and relatives who teach all over the country, including in places like Montana and Texas, who are having the exact same behavior issues that we're having here. So what I'd really like for us to do is what we've been asking for all along, and that is to focus on how to solve the problem locally. In order to do that, we need to first hold parents accountable for teaching their children how to behave at school and for supporting us when there are consequences for their students' actions. And second, we need to support our site administrators in a, in a way, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble speaking tonight, our site administrators in a way that they can consistently dole out appropriate and effective consequences and not be worried about parents' threats to call the superintendent and school board when they don't get their way. Even if it's an undesirable decision, in the parents' opinion, if it's in line with MBUSD's values and policies, we need them to know it's going to be supported at all levels every single time. I would also like to point out that SB 274 is very specific to willful defiance. It does not take away our ability, per Ed Code 48900, to suspend students for profanity or vulgarity, threatening behavior, violence, and a multitude of other offenses. With a quick email to Mr. Tukwa, I found out that there were 675 suspensions in MBUSD last year, 30 of which were for habitual profanity. So no, you can't just tell your teacher to F off and get away with it in this district. In addition, as of September 24th, there were already 112 suspensions this year, and I'm sure that number's gone up since then. My point is that Mr. Tukwa and his Student Services team are doing a fantastic job in the area of suspensions. I do not think the problem is that we aren't suspending kids when needed. It's a much bigger problem than that. Kids don't wake up in the morning and say, "I'm going to go disrespect my teacher because SB 274 says the school can't suspend me for it." So why are students across the nation coming to school thinking they can act that way? Do they act that way at home, in the community, at church? Where are they learning that those behaviors are acceptable? My guess is that social media has a lot to do with the problem nationwide. I also think they see people who are supposed to be role models, politicians, athletes, celebrities, social media influencers, and in some cases, even their own parents, behave in these, in some of these same defiant and disruptive ways. So what do we do here in little old Marietta to fix a problem that is so much bigger than our community? We start by raising the bar. We raise our expectations at all levels, from TK all the way through high school. We raise our expectations of students, of their parents, and of our site administrators. We hold a consistently high standard, and we do not veer from it. We educate parents, and we expect them to come alongside us, not to fight us or contradict us or threaten us when we're holding their children accountable for their inappropriate choices or actions. As I've said before, and I'm sure I'll say again, as a district and school board, we need to keep a laser focus on what really matters, improving teaching and learning conditions right here in this award-winning school district. So please, stop trying to pit our MBUSD educators against one another because of their different personal and political views. None of that belongs here, because I'll tell you right now, just like the three of you who are teachers up there, the educators in this district, whether they are in this room tonight or not, whether they are MEA or not, members of MEA or not, they got into this profession because they want to help students learn. That's it. There's no hidden political agenda. And they can't do what they got into this profession to do if they are spending all of their time dealing with students who lack respect for adults and authority and who take away the rights of the other students in their classes to have a safe environment conducive to learning. And there absolutely are things we can do right here, right now, to enact positive change. So let's get to it.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Desiree Espinoza, CSCE.
Good evening, President Pardue, Board, and Dr. Andrews. Negotiations are still ongoing, and we look forward to more collaborative conversations with the district to be able to provide a hard-working classified, sorry, provide our hard-working classified with fair compensation. Our classified staff continue to face difficulties like student behaviors, heavy workload, and decrease in support due to turnover in positions because of low wages. We would like to thank all classified for their dedication and passion to providing an enriched education for our students. During these difficult times, we will continue to advocate and provide a voice for both classified staff and the students we serve. I invite classified listening to get involved. We are here. We work with you. Come to us. Our meetings are seldom, and there's not many attending. We need you. We need each other. I invite you to come. Come to us. We are here for you. Thank you for giving us this time and opportunity to share with you tonight.
All right. Thank you. And Superintendent Report, Dr. Andrews.
Thank you, and I appreciate the public comments, all those from the variety of perspectives that we have in our community. As was said many times, I think there's an air of, or the air of trying to find more common ground. I appreciate that tenor and tone. There's things we can do together which are much more beneficial. There will always be things that divide us, but there's also always things that unite us. And we're remaining focused on our common purpose of improving student learning or outcomes or opportunities for students is what really binds us together. And that's why we're all in the same room tonight or watching this at some point in time, or coming to work tomorrow. Knowing very well, having grown up in a family of educators, all of my siblings are educators or were retired. A couple of them are smarter, and they got out before I did. But, and even having some of my own children in, in working within schools is also beneficial. They give me good insight and perspective as well on what their experience is like. Yes, this is an award-winning district, and I want to just highlight a couple of things that have been released, actually, this week. We provided a press release. The National Educational Results Partnership, which is a nationwide organization, it's a nonprofit organization, they apply data science and regarding school success, they announced the California Honor Roll List. 21% of all schools in California made the honor roll, and this district, again, once again, made the honor roll, and 15 of our schools made the honor roll list as well. And so it's ongoing student achievement and performance and things like that. 15 out of 19, that's nearly everyone. And I don't really know why the other four didn't make it, because chances are, they're pretty close. So we just want to recognize the great work that our school is doing in that area. It's a variety of things they do. And this organization is not an academic organization, it's a business organization. So they look at, from an employer perspective in the, in society across the country, they look at what makes the schools and students successful, and that's the criteria that they measure us by. Also, this last week, our, the State of California released the Academic Performance Indicator on the CASP test, that's that statewide spring test. Once again, this year, we made steady progress. 2.7% more students proficient or advanced in language arts, and another 2% in math. We still have a long ways to go. We all know we continue to work in that area, but we're making steady growth in that area as well. We are planning community forums regarding our facilities. One of the topics that has been, come up in this meeting, as we talk about facilities and the condition of our schools, we had a nice conversation about restrooms and the end of our oldest high school, those concerns there. We have a community groups coming up, community meetings. There actually, in the foyer is a card with all these community dates coming up in November. Yes, you have it right there. Thank you. Those dates, we encourage community to come out and participate. Very similar to the redistricting forums that we did this time last year, is a similar discussion about facilities. There'll be three, one hosted by each high school, and they'll be focused around the schools in each high school, general high school feeder pattern. So the west of the 15, the central part of the district, and the eastern part of the district. So please look, and we encourage folks to come and participate in that. These next two weeks are full of fabulous fall festivals and trunk-or-treats at the elementary schools. They are really busy, so you have to get in line early if you're going to go. I found that out last year, trying to get in Buchanan, took an hour to walk in the gate. So just, it's a great opportunity to connect with families and to our schools and the great things that are happening. Also available, and this will be out there publicly, it's on our website very soon, this is a list of all of our fall plays that are coming up at the high schools throughout the year. And so, starting as early as this month, the outsiders leaving town and pride and prejudice are all coming up at our high schools. It's a great way to get out there, to see our students perform, support them, and a reminder that all senior citizens or folks, well, excuse me, depends on who you classify that. We had to draw a number somewhere. So we said 16 older. 16 older can get a lifetime pass from us that gets you into any play for free forever. So just come get one, and so you can get in for free. Come see our students in action. Lastly, I just want to share, in my recent visits, I've spent a lot of time in my elementary schools and visiting those to look in our first and second grade in our youngest classrooms. And it's really been delightful to watch our youngest of scholars really learning how to read, and it's been really insightful. It's this combination of both focused teacher effort and new curriculums, one being 95 phonics and also our benchmark curriculum, really coming together. It's pretty delightful to stand, to be in a classroom, and when the teacher asks a first grader, a second grader to read aloud, they're reading, like, these long sentences of 10 to 15 words at a time, and be able to write the same. And then having teachers ask, okay, here's the word train, take away the "t" sound, what's that word? And they can all repeat it. So they're getting that phonemic awareness as they're learning to read. It is really remarkable. I look back on my experience, thought, I don't think I could do that till I was like, I was older. And to really understand, like, when that happened. So it's great to see that happening in our schools. Our new math curriculum, we're in the second month of using that, there's lots of learning going on, but we're making some progress. So we're great to see that, that work. So it's nice to see the, the very intentional focus by our teachers in that area. So, and this concludes my comments. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Board Member Reports. I'd like to start with Mrs. Schmidt.
Okay. Well, happy fall, everyone. I just wanted to start off, and I already did this in closed session, but I wanted to do it in public session, and I let Ms. Young know. The first thing I would like to do is start off by apologizing, so I heard people up here saying we need to think about our actions, which you're right. And after the last board, regular board meeting, I had made a comment about, towards Mrs. Young, that was, I got convicted by because I kind of attacked her personally. I said something along, like, look in the mirror, or something like that. But anyway, it just wasn't appropriate. I, and we can agree to disagree and everything and be passionate about things, but first of all, I just wanted to apologize publicly to you. you for making that comment.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The first thing I'd like to mention and ask for are prayers for Kai Ching, did I say his name correctly? Okay. The Vista Marietta student who was injured in the football game last week. I was told that players on both teams surrounded him and started praying for him, like immediately. So I just think that was an amazing action. And thank you to all the players and athletic staff, trainers, first responders, and everyone else who provided care and prayers at the time of his injury. Your quick thinking likely saved him. And I know there, if you're interested, there is a GoFundMe that you could donate to support to his ongoing recovery. It was just kind of a miracle that he's going to be okay, right? I guess it was a very severe injury, so just wanted to put that out there so we can continue to pray for him and offer support. Since our last regular meeting, we had Constitution Day, and I want to thank everyone who participated. I saw some great pictures of events and activities that were taking place at many of the different sites, so thank you to the teachers, the administrators, and the students who participated. And I got to pass out pencils to students at Moreno Elementary dressed as Martha Washington, even though the kids thought I was Elsa from Frozen. I was like, oh, that's okay, think a little bit, you know, back in the olden days. But it was, it was a success, and Dr. Andrus was there, so thank you to Ms. Key and your staff. That was a really fun thing to do, and you're just interacting with the students and just for them getting this pencil, like, they were really excited about it, so I enjoyed that. Also, our constitution activities at the Marietta Market were also a big hit, and many parents came up to me at the market and commented on how happy they were that the constitution booths were there. And one of the biggest attention-getters was the students got quills, like actually feathers with the quills, and they dipped it in ink, and then they got to sign a constitution. So that was fun. And the parents seemed to really like it, and there was a lot of people there. So I just want to thank you to all of the volunteers who put in so many hours, because it was, it was a pretty time-consuming thing, an act of love, right? Who put in so many hours to make it a success. And now, the person that runs the Marietta Market, she asked us if we could do it every time. We're like, oh no, this is, it's too much, but we'll do it every year, because it was, it was a big hit. So thank you to Marietta Market for that. Also, in regards to the constitution, I attended a city hall meeting where we are awarded the City of Marietta proclamation. This was in September, but I haven't spoken since September. So it's a proclamation from the City of Marietta, and it was just saying that the City of Marietta, City Council here by proclaims the week of September seventeenth through the twenty-third is Constitution Week in the City of Marietta. So we were able to get this and attend, and just thank you to the mayor and the city council for that as well. As far as my board member duties, I visited Thompson Middle School, MCA, Lisa J. Miles, and McElhaney. And thank you to all of the administrators who welcomed me and showed me around. There were amazing things going on at each of these sites. And then also last week, Mrs. Briggs and myself, and Faith and Ryan and Dr. Andrus, we got to visit David Long, and we were pretty much blown away. Wish we were the county and had all that money, that would be really nice. But hopefully we can do some kind of partnership with this site. So that's what I've been busy with as far as like visiting sites. And then lastly, it was just announced that our lovely governor signed AB 495 into law, which is very concerning, and this affects like all of California. This bill allows an adult with fifth degrees of relation to use a one-page form to get guardianship-like powers over someone else's minor child, including living arrangements, school enrollment, and medical and mental health decisions. No parental signature is required for this date. No oversight or follow-up to make sure the child is safe with the adult, which is deeply disturbing. And so I know, Dr. Andrus, that you sent an email out today, right, to principals about this bill. So I just would like to have you, your input publicly of what assurances can you give to our families that this won't affect our families?
Correct. So I was also very concerned about Assembly Bill 495. Part of what happens in the state of California is oftentimes legislation is passed for the entire state, but only affects certain populations. And I was hopeful there would have been a different way to address the need without having it be a sweeping district-wide legal change. However, I do want to ensure families that even though the bill has been signed into law, our practices, protocols, and board policies have not changed. And just to clarify that, we still require that every caregiver or someone who has a caregiver affidavit that their name is on the emergency card. And we always go back to the emergency card first and check those names. And so if someone were to present themselves to check out a student, they wouldn't get very far, because if their name's on the emergency card, no one's going anywhere. We've, as you know, we've increased some of our safety protocols on campus with the visitor ID badges and so forth, especially our elementary grades, but we still rely upon the emergency contact card as the gold standard. That is the names that we look at. We encourage families, if there's some change in situation, please keep that up to date. Please contact us if you have some sort of a scenario, we're going to healthcare, or someone's moved, or whatever it may be, to keep that emergency card up to date. And we'll work to ways to remind families of that, so they can keep that current. But that still becomes our gold standard, and that's what we look to first and foremost and always.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Ms. Young.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. So I was invited to be a validator for the Golden Bell Awards. A Golden Bell Awards recognizes excellent programs in school districts around the state. So they sent me up to Lake Elsinore, where I got, they, I got to see what they do for staff development, and I just brought a pile of it to Dr. Andrus. They said, don't steal their presenters, but then they said, oh, it won't be on the same day. But they have really popular staff development programs done at the schools, and they polled the staff to see what they want training in, and that's how they determine what they do. And they said it's even so popular that staff ask to shorten the lunch so they can spend more time in the training sessions, which is kind of unusual, but it tells you that they like it. So yeah, we can all learn from each other. I appreciated the experience, and I'll see them again. They will present the awards up in Sacramento during the CSBA conference in December. I also went to the Excellence in Education Conference, several of us did. It's the third time I've got to attend this conference. And Marietta had a really solid presence. There were quite a few administrators, teachers, board, and you know, there are, it's a Riverside County Education Conference, so there were really people from all over the county. And it really is excellent. They had general sessions. There were also, during the rest of the day, there were breakout sessions. Every time there was a breakout session scheduled, there were like four or five that I wanted to go to. So I couldn't do everything I wanted. Okay, so, anyway, I appreciate staff development. I've worked for two different school districts. The first district I worked in really did a lot of staff development, sent us to conferences, training. And the second district I worked for hardly did anything at all. And it makes a huge difference, you know, being able to learn, then you pass it on to others. It also affects morale, being able to get training and staff development. I did a site visit to Vista Marietta High School, and this visit, we, because I've been there a few times before, but we focus more on the arts. I got to go into the jazz band class, and I'm a huge jazz fan, and that was real jazz. Not everybody knows what it's supposed to be. We got to see the kitchen, and they serve a lot of students there, so, and breaks are short. You know, we heard in comments, breaks are short, lunches short. So it's kind of amazing that they managed to distribute so much food in such a small amount of time. I went into an art class, photography class, math, too, avid. You know, and they have some structural issues that need to be addressed, like their library needs, really needs upgrading. I was shocked at how small it was for such a large school. So I also went to the Student of the Month Breakfast, and it's always a very positive event. And we got, for the first time, we had it in the Early Learning Center. And I want to congratulate Taylor Aaron from Vista Marietta, Christina Fayad from Marietta Mesa High School. Both of them plan to be doctors. And I would also like to congratulate Shane Stenson from Marietta Valley High School, and he plans on being a lawyer. I also went to a bond meeting with Darren Daniel and Jonathan Pratt, just to learn more about the process. We went through this a couple years ago, but they are tweaking a few things this time, so it's not a hundred percent the same. I went to a site council meeting for Vista Marietta High School. They were talking about the facility's master plan. They were talking about needs. They have, I know this is a little gross, but people need to be aware of it. They have some plumbing problems, like sometime sewage coming up into classrooms. We need to invest in our schools. They did, the school was built for eighteen-hundred students. Well, I feel like I should get it out there, okay. And there are thirty-four-hundred students on campus, so the school has double the amount of students that it was actually built for. Every single classroom is being utilized. Their stadium doesn't have enough space. Sports medicine, CTE, needs more space. Students need more space for the tutoring programs. They talked about the site safety plan, emergency procedures, which anybody who's worked in schools know, we have to be trained and know our roles when something happens. They would like to increase pedestrian and bicyclist safety. You've probably been hearing about the bicycle issue over the last year or so. And you know, like elevator, elevators can be an issue. Most of us can easily take the stairs, but, okay, what if the elevator's not working? You have a student in a wheelchair, how do you get them upstairs? So they want to focus more on maintaining the elevators versus repairing them when they break down, so. I also volunteered at the Santa Rosa Plateau Nature Education Resource Forum. This was a free event for local teachers and any type of environmental educator. So there were teachers from all the surrounding districts. I did see the largest group from Marietta. I saw some people I know. And there were presenters from multiple universities and from the Riverside County Office of Education, and the focus was STEM education. They had keynote speakers, breakout sessions, and the day ended with a hike on the plateau. And again, it was a free event for teachers. They do it every year, so. And yeah, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Mrs. Briggs.
All right. I will make it brief. We had a busy September, and then I guess that's the last time we did board reports. I did, though, do ice cream sales for the Vista's PTSA, which I had never done before. Let me tell you, those ladies are phenomenal. The ones who run the program are incredible. But while I was there, Mrs. Gallian was kind enough to give me a tour since I hadn't done a site visit yet for Vista. And so she actually took the time out of her morning to give me a tour. I had a few minutes, and Vista is a very large populated, least populated school, but she has some pretty tight reins in there. I mean, it's just, I'm sure they have their issues with student, you know, stuff, but overall, the campus is phenomenal, like everybody knew who she was on campus. And here is a shout-out to Ms. Gallian, because she does a principal's advisory, and I didn't know, I don't know if any other principal is doing it, but she actually selects students and gets recommendations from teachers within her school, and they recommend a student to sit on an advisory panel so that she knows kind of the heartbeat of what's going on right in her school with, from a student perspective, which I thought was fabulous. So thank you, Ms. Gallian, for the tour, and thank you for having that, I'm principal's board. We, I did a conference call, I've got, actually have done two since we spoke, when, since we presented last with the DLR people and the facilities master plan with Mr. Darren Daniels and his team, which, very concise on the, the meeting times, but I just want to give the community a heads up. They are really working hard behind the scenes to get as many, as much information into this facility's master plan to be able to accommodate requests like our first speaker about the bathroom situ, they're well aware, our district staff is well aware of all the, they have this like wish list, I think I call it a dream list, for every site. And based on what we do in the next little bit here, those wish lists are coming to the top of the pile, because they either have to be addressed because of age, or you know, I have some dreams and wishes I'd like for the district. They're not going to make it to the top of the pile currently, because they cost money, thank you, James. But I'll get them there. I will get them there at some point. And so those calls have been really great. And then one of the things that they're going to be rolling out, that they have specifically a team with the PIO, with Monica overseeing and facilitating, is a video that's going to come out. And I have to tell you, I heard the audio, and I sent Monica back a text, and I thought, this is all the feels. It really is, my heart was to be able to express to this community how valuable the district, a role the district plays in the community, even in terms of the facilities that are used. I was at an event on a Sunday, and it was at, I think it was Tovishaw, do they have a sports area there, Darren? Is Tovishaw, but it was completely packed. I went because one, somebody invited me from the community to come see their kid play football, and I walk into this campus, and I, first of all, I thought school was in session, because there were so many cars and so many people. And I've been on school sites before, like my daughter played lacrosse, but specifically on this day, as I was walking from the entrance to Tovishaw to the end of the camp, the playground area where he was playing, there are little tykes playing baseball. I'm talking like two- and three-year-old kids in baseball uniforms, as I, and the progression of age just happened, but it was such a visual of how important the district is in this community. So will I advocate for it? A hundred percent. Are there opportunities that I know that we need to address? A hundred percent. And our job as a board is to be able to take the, the wins and the opportunities and to be able to make this work for our community. If you see, if you had been there, I wish I'd taken video, Darren, of that Tovishaw experience, because you would have known definitively that the district plays such a huge role in that. So I was just very grateful. Thank you to Stacy and Rich for inviting me to come see their son play. He's a student at Monte, no, Lisa J. Miles, and so I was very excited to be there. We had the Student of the Month Breakfast, other people talked about it. Hey, I've been to two Rotary luncheons, never been to a Rotary meeting before, let me tell you, they do some good work. Those Rotarians, you know, it's, it's amazing. They give, and they take lots of dollars, let me just tell you. If you're going to a Rotary meeting, bring dollar bills. Dr. Andrus like had to give me a couple dollars, because I was there, and you feel like so compelled to give, because the cause is good and they make it fun to give. So if you're ever in the area, the Rotary does tremendous work in Marietta. In fact, I had experiences with them before I came on as a board member, and just knowing that they do the field of honor is a huge thing for Marietta, and you guys should support what they do. Go out, take a look at all the flags and all that fun stuff, but they, they do a great job. I attended the Excellence Through Education Conference in Palm Springs with a great team of people, Faith Munchink leading the crew. I had no idea until we did the little debrief, how many teachers and administrators were present for that training, and it was kind of cool to see outside of a school site setting. You know, I think those are always good, to get together outside of what you do on a daily, if with your job, to get together with your teams. I'm a huge proponent of that, to be able to build relationships, you know, a lot of people call it team building or whatever. The truth is, is it builds a camaraderie that is different if you didn't have them outside of a school site setting. I'm fully aware of that, so I was very grateful. Thank you, Ms. Faith. And the David Long, what can I say about David Long facility? How many of you guys know we have a David Long facility, and it is a, it's not a continuation? It is, what is, what is the school, what are they?
It's the County Office of Education Community School.
And it's right on Winchester. They have a beautiful facility.
No, it's on...
Not Winchester, what is that street?
It's on Guava and Madison.
Oh, yeah, there, geographically. And it is a beautiful facility. So here's why we went, and I want to explain this to the community, because during our closed sessions, we go over, like, to Ms. Murray's point about the fact that our Student Services Department really does everything they can do to support a student who is having a little difficulty in life, either following the rules, or they have little challenging family life, that they just need some extra special attention. And if they come out of our system, they're required by law to go into another system to be able to continue their education. Our referral process, as far as I'm aware, is to David E. Long, is like the ultimate, like the final, here, this is like your last chance opportunity. So in my mind, as a new board member, maybe because I didn't know what the building looked like, I think I had the same impression as Ms. Schmidt when we... like, I think I had the same impression as Ms. Schmidt when we were sitting there meeting. In my mind, I'm thinking, oh, my gosh, this must be terrible, like, a concrete building with, like, wired fences, and like, it's all gated, and these kids, like, my heart was so, like, where are we sending them? We're signing these papers in our closed session, and we're saying, we as a board are sending this student to this facility. And I had no idea what that facility was, which I guess I could have Googled it. But let me tell you, the experience of going there was far better. It was far better, because then my heart was at ease, because what I recognize is, although they have a very small student population, it's truly designed to give them a different perspective of how a school can operate on a scale similar to MCA. It's on a scale that they can really grasp. And if they're having super challenging issues, we were assured, in fact, two people came out from Riverside County to come meet us at this, and we had, like, five people in the room to our group. It was pretty impressive. But because they have all that funding, they can do that. And what it gave me reassurance, though, is that our district does do its very, very best before our students leave our space to accommodate their family living. I don't know if anybody knows it, I want you all to know, our Student Services will go to a student's house, knock on their door if they've been absent for X amount of days. They will visit family members, they will call, they will go through as far as, you know, as much as they can to help them. But if none of that helps, they get referred to David Long. And that facility by, run by the county is actually pretty impressive. And one of these days, we're going to have a facility, like, that's what our goal is, to have a facility like that for, available for all students. But that was the David Long visit. That was very eye-opening. So, other than that, Mrs. Murray, I just got your email about the, the link, and I'm happy to do this. I believe in parent involvement. I'm pretty sure everybody who knows, since I started this board, I am about getting involved with your kids. So whatever that conversation looks like, if it's not this bill, and if it is, the Student Services is doing everything they can, what is the component that's missing? So we need to, I'm happy to come into that conversation. I want to be part of it, and I want to know how we can help kind of facilitate some of that. And that is the conclusion of my report.
All right. Thank you. So one of the things I want to start with, and that, I'm glad that you remind me, it was a heartbreaking issue for the Pardoo family to hear about Kai at Vista Murrieta High School. My daughter played with McKenna Ching, and she was an amazing, hard-working athlete who played with so much aggression. And one of my students in class knew Kai and was saying that he was exactly the same kind of football player. My son, having played football at Murrieta Valley, and my heart goes out to these players. They play really hard. It's a violent sport. There's lots of injuries, and to hear the seriousness and gravity of that was, was really heartbreaking. And it was really touching to see our community come together. And then, of course, Stephanie Ching, who works at Tovishaw, just a great parent, great woman, does such a good job, and to just know what a great community we have when it comes to these serious issues, it was, it was really, really touching. And we continue to pray for his, his recovery. One of the things, I think, I would agree with a lot of the speakers, the, the reason I bring up partisan issues is sometimes you just disagree with me, and that's fine. You can be disagreeable. But there are some things that we can agree on, and if we work together, and that's the issue that I have. If you have an issue, then work with me. Bathroom issues, huge issue at every single school. Every school has bathroom issues. And if you shoot me an email, I can work my way to help resolve that issue. I know at our site, a lot of times, it's supervision issue while the kids are in class. There's only so many supervisors who can watch. Sometimes they'll shut down a bathroom. There's different issues. So at, at the very least, I can look at that, including, one of the big issues that Ms. Murray, you and I can agree on, is the discipline issue. And I've said this a lot. I am super tough with this guy right here, and every time we're in closed session, you can ask anyone who's been involved in this, I want to hold kids and parents accountable for their behaviors. And it's important to me. And if there's good communication coming from one side, and it's, and then we're supportive of you here on the dais, then a lot of things can happen. But if we continue to have a contentious relationship, that's why I say partisanship. Partisan is, I don't like you, Mr. Pardoo. I totally disagree with everything you say. That's partisan. You're not working with me. That's fine. You can disagree. I'm not saying you can't disagree. And I'm, I'm just going to say, we're not seeing that eye to eye. If you have something we can work together and focus on common ground, we're going to be way more productive as a board and as a community, and I've said that numerous times. Bathroom issues, I am very concerned to hear about sewage in the classrooms. What school site was that, Nancy, you mentioned?
Vista Murrieta.
It was Vista Murrieta. Did that happen this year, last year? Was sewage getting?
Darren, you want to bring that up? I know there was an incident about a year ago. We had vapes, vaping pens flushed down the toilet, caused a blockage. Took us a while to chase that one down. Do you want to add some detail to that?
Yeah. Anytime you, if you think about the number of kids on a campus, when you talk about the number of kids that, on, on a campus, although we've expanded buildings, so we are ready for more than 1,800, the underground has not necessarily been changed, right? That plumbing is all the same. And so, yeah, you know, things, when things get stuffed down there, we do get blockage in the, in the two-story science building in particularly, because they have a lot of sinks in, in a science classroom. And so when a bathroom gets, you know, backed up, where does it go? It rises, and it will go into different places, such as floor sinks inside of a science classroom and whatnot.
Was that this year?
No, it hasn't been for a while. We've invested in a jetting, a jetter, so instead of us having to call out a plumber, we've invested in that equipment so we can react and respond very quickly. So we haven't had that problem since that issue.
Okay. I was just concerned.
That is not, that is not a regular occurrence.
It did happen.
It did happen.
No, you know, we do have plumbing issues throughout, you know, for a variety of different reasons. It could be roots, it could be whatever. But I think our, our ability to respond is much better today than it was a couple years ago.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I'll continue. Those issues we share in common is what I'm getting at. So obviously bathrooms, we, we want kids to be able to go to the bathroom. We want to have a safe classroom for both the teachers and the students. I think that's really, really important. I know I've talked to Dr. Andres. One place we could really focus on is sportsmanship, right? It was really cool to hear about the players coming together praying for the safety of this child, but at the end of games, a lot of the taunting that you see on basketball games and football games at the end of a victory or something like that, it'd be nice if we got to, to get on that. And I think we can get parents on board with that, and I think that would be valid.
Are you reading, like, did you know that we have a sportsmanship conference coming up?
No, but I, I'm just saying.
Thank you. There you go. It's coming up next week.
I think there's, there's a lot of commonalities of things that we can focus on. I also had numerous phone calls from constituents, lots of people talking about safety concerns. And I'll just highlight Coal Canyon traffic, as parents driving through crossing areas. Mona Vista had similar issues regarding safety concerns, a lot of special ed issues. As a board, and if you've sat on the board, you know, you get it all kinds. And I take great pride in trying to respond personally to each person who emails me, talks to me, is trying to work with me on these specific issues. I also attended the Excellence in Education Conference in Palm Springs, and I've been very involved in the transitional math issue, and we happened to get an advisor, Dr. Sugie Sorensen from JPL, to try to help make sure that our math scores are where that we want. We really want to excel. We want to talk about excellence in our, in our district. That's a big issue and has been since the time I've been here. One of the biggest pet peeves I've had, and I had to stop saying it, because I knew I was offending some people. I don't want to hear about graduation rates. I want to know that our students have the skill set to go off into the world and be successful. So I don't want to hear anymore about it. I've backed off because that was kind of just a knee-jerk thing that's said in a lot of presentations. But I think it's important to note that although there might feel like there's a lot of politics, what we do is a lot of school nuts and bolts, how are we improving education in the classroom? My wife teaches in one of the most rundown classrooms. I made sure that today, while we were discussing PE and how to have advanced PE and how to keep teachers safe and make sure that they're treated fairly by administrative staff and all these other different things that we actually address, that Mrs. Schmidt got a chance to see the science labs at Murrieta Valley High School. I also, since there's people watching, I'm a big advocate for the ceramics room. That did not look great. With that being said, I will add this, because we talked about the tenor in the, in the boardroom, and I hear you. I'm going to take this opportunity to talk about something that really matters to me, and it, it really hit me, and it hit a lot of my students hard. I would like to take this opportunity to honor Charlie Kirk on what would have been his 32nd birthday. He advocated for free speech and spoke openly about his faith, challenged political correctness and promoted critical thinking. He was a harsh critic of our education system, challenged the status quo. He openly and effectively defended the Christian faith and traditional American values. Charlie's death was a result of one deranged individual who could not and did not see Charlie as a human being worthy of life. The values Charlie preached and espoused were antithetical to leftists and the secular world. He was murdered, and his death was cheered by the left. Because he was effective in his messaging, he was shot in his throat because of his voice. This act of violence highlights the dangers of othering, not normalizing our board and ostracizing people with different political views. We need to have a civil discourse and teach our young people to be open to different perspectives. The alternative is actually too nightmarish to speak of, because if we don't have a First Amendment right, we, as a society, will stop talking to each other about issues, and then we will see violence in our society, and only our young people will suffer from that. And we need to be really wise in how we handle this. Charlie's legacy continues within the hearts and minds of young and old alike across America. I man, I say old, because so many adults have decided to go to church, to get involved. I can tell you how many young people really looked up to Charlie. Whether you agree with them or not, there are a lot of young people who are hurt by what happened. Charlie's legacy continues within the hearts and minds of young and old alike. I said this already, he is worthy of the Presidential Medal of Freedom, which President Trump honored him with posthumously today. His widowed wife and children, children continue to honor him with their dignity and grace during this difficult trial they have been made to endure. My hope is that the lasting legacy of Charlie Kirk is for the young and old who loved him to continue to uphold and fight for our constitutional rights, especially the First Amendment in its original form, that we take increased devotion to improve ourselves morally, physically, and intellectually throughout our lives, to seek truth and beauty in the world, leaving a better place, leaving the world a better place than how we found it. On that note, I was able to visit Vista, sorry, Murrieta Valley High School today, which I learned there's a Turning Point USA chapter on campus. And unfortunately, some people have vandalized some of their posters during this last month. I had a meeting with Thompson Middle School Principal and Murrieta Valley Principal Rod Deleon, oh, sorry, Thompson Middle School Principal Rod Deleon and Murrieta Valley Principal Stephen Deephouse, along with representatives of the PE department from both schools to discuss PE standards and a desire for excellence in all of our programs. Excellence is an important goal for us to pursue, not just in PE and athletics, but also in academics. There is a discussion about ending traditions at Murrieta Valley High School that would highlight academic success. There have also been discussions about ending valedictorian and salutary honors for our top students. I find that difficult to get my mind around. How are we reaching for excellence and yet diminishing the accomplishments of our top students in the areas of academics? If we were going to pursue that, why are we keeping scoring games? Why don't we just cheer every time someone on the field scores? How come when, well, there's so many different examples. We really need to pay attention to this idea of excellence. It matters, and I would like to have that, that conversation with everybody who's here and to the parents who are watching. Accelerate courses in high school and advanced courses in middle school are major concerns of mine. I am constantly pushing to maintain these programs. I would like to hear how parents and teachers feel about these issues, not just administrators. Hopefully, this becomes a starting point for this type of discussion in the near future, and that we can find common ground on the things that matter to us most, which is our children and their academic achievement. Thank you very much.
I just, sorry, Nick, I need clarification. So the whole valedictorian thing, removing it, are you saying there's plans to remove it?
I am not aware of any plans to remove it. There might be discussion at certain levels.
Okay.
But it's not reached, like, a discussion for me to talk about, so this would be news to me, so I'll continue to find out more.
I would just like to stay posted. I want to know what that looks like.
Yeah, the board has policy in place.
Yeah.
About how that's done.
Okay.
So in order to change that, I would take the board's actions. So at this point in time, it's not something that I've been made aware of, that there would be a recommendation to make a modification to. And I've had a brief discussion with Mr. Pardoo about this, and it's not something on the horizon that I foresee.
It was something that was discussed in meeting today that I'm privy to. So I know that this is a conversation that's being had, and it definitely does not seek board approval before that discussion's being had.
Understood.
With that being said, board member reports are concluded. Moving on to F, Consent Calendar. Consent calendar items are voted on collectively as a group. Upon board member request, items may be removed from the consent calendar for discussion and individual action. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendars, item F1 through F5, as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries 4-0. Item G1, Approval of Personnel Report, calls for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries 4-0. Item G2, Approval of New Job Description, calls for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries 4-0. Item G3, Approval to Pay Dual Enrollment Teachers at Mount San Jacinto College, oh, sorry, at Mount San Jacinto College Courses from the District via the Middle College and Early College Grant, calls for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
I just have a question real quick, Doc. I apologize. I should have asked this on my email, but is this replacing the MSJC connection?
So we've had a, quite a change from MSJC. They were funding these classes.
Right.
They curtailed greatly their funding of these classes. So our staff chased down a grant and to pay for them as we look for new opportunities. So to kind of, this is a bit of a bandage, but we did, our staff were able to secure a $250,000 grant that we'll spend over the next two years. So this is to authorize payment out of the grant to pay for those sections that MSJC used to provide. So we're still offering it, but the funding has come from a different place now.
Got it. Good job, staff, whoever that is. Good job.
Mrs. Ruiz.
And Mr. Wager.
And Mr. Wager. So $250,000, and we're just kind of the go-between between, until we resolve with the MSJC?
No. We're buying time.
Buying time. Okay. Asynchronous.
It means, like, kids take it whenever they're available.
She's doing EdSpeakOnMe.com. I know she is. I just know it. Remember, I'm not, I'm the only non-teacher up here, Faith. I get it. I'm learning. I'm on a curve, but I'm learning. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
On their own time.
Okay.
Not a schedule.
Perfect. That's it.
All right. I think it calls for a motion. In a second, do we have that?
I think we did.
Do we have that? Okay.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries 4-0. Item G4, adoption of resolution number 2526-5, early notification incentive of intent to retire or resign, calls for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries 4-0. Item G5, adoption of resolution number 2526-6, approving the 202627 California Department of Education Child Development Application to Provide State Preschool Services, calls for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries 4-0. Item G6, William Uniform Complaint Quarterly Report, the board has received this report. Item G7, discussion item, interview questions for provisional appointment to the Board of Trustees. Call on Dr. Andrews.
So trustees, the, the board in the past has had kind of a, as we've gone through this process before, has had a set of questions that the applicants answer. And it's answered all those questions, all that takes place here in public. There isn't like, as we've talked about, there's no closed session, et cetera. So attached to this agenda item are the questions that have been used in the past by prior boards. And so, but in hearing in both conversation from each of you differently at different times, at least some of you, like there's a desire to possibly ask a different question. So I would, a couple of things. One, there's an opportunity to adjust or change the question prior to the 28th. Also, I would consider, I would, a thought of mine is depending on the number of applicants that we have, because each qualified applicant is entitled to an interview. So they could get, this could become a very, very long night, depending on how that evening goes. So I would recommend that we, in essence, because there are four questions plus one says time permitting, that we still kind of curtail it to a total of four to five questions. But I would, and this is just a discussion for you to give direction about what we would put on here. So my thought would be, at this point in time, is if one of you'd like to ask a specific question and maybe which one it might replace, so that we could have a, a process together.
I'd like to just suggest to start with here, and if everyone here agrees, if we struck number four, because I think from what I understand, there are some issues that board members would like to discuss or have a, a potential candidate answer. Number four and probably number five would be to that. The first three, I think, are pretty valid in my humble opinion, but it's a discussion. So I'd love input from the rest of you.
But I actually like both of them, so I don't, I don't have a problem with any of the questions, really.
Well, I think for question four, maybe just, should we read it so they know what question it is?
Sure. It's attached to the agenda, but doesn't mean that people have it.
So question four is identify an important issue in education that you felt, felt strongly about and describe how you would balance community concerns, student needs, state and federal law, staff considerations, and your personal value and beliefs to determine on how to vote on this issue. Um, I'm just thinking, like for me, if I was interviewing, I would think that's like, has 10 different answers. So maybe just like shortening it or amending it to what do you see as the biggest challenges facing our school district right now? Or what are the biggest challenges facing our students? Just maybe shortening it a little bit. That's what I would suggest.
I think this is such a serious role and since we have the questions out here, they're going to have them ahead of time anyway. Like I think it's okay to address all these issues. They have time to think about it.
Well, that's true. It's just, I don't know if, because I'm assuming it's a panel of people that interview, right?
Oh, no, it's just you.
We're the panel.
Okay, we're the panel.
You're the panel.
It's hard when you're having a panel listening, because I've done that before and a lot of times, and they time you sometimes and you, and so. I'm just saying, to make it easier for people.
I, the question came up, is, are the questions timed? Well, we clearly, we have the capacity to put a time limit on each question. I think that's a consideration for the board. Let's say, for example, there's 15 candidates that want to come.
Yeah.
I don't think you want those unlimited, because that will take hours and hours. We have to have another meeting just to get through them all. So that might be a consideration, but having them, having them in advance and say, okay, you have two minutes or three minutes per question, and, because they would have, the applicant would have had opportunity to prepare a response for the known questions.
Are they able to bring, they're going to get the questions, are they able to bring this with them? Like off field, so they have something to refer to?
That's the intention, because we would like to have the best, the best experience for both the applicant and the board, so that you can hear from them. So that's the intention behind this discussion tonight and the questions.
So I think we just need to clarify, I think, and important, just quantify that. So identify one issue in education you feel strongly about.
It mentioned, yeah, it says, it says unimportant issue, which does mean one issue.
We could, we could be specific and say, clarify one.
So that way they can focus on the one thing that is important to them.
But then all of that, balance community concerns, student needs, state and federal law, staff considerations, and your personal value and beliefs, like that's to me, that's too much. Like if we could just narrow it down to.
Okay. And then, and that's the tricky part about being a board member, are all those things.
Yeah, we have to do all that anyway, so I think it's a really good question.
Okay.
Yeah, I do.
I actually have found all the questions are pretty, pretty good questions. The issue that I, that I was trying to bring to your attention is, I think you both had indicated there's some questions you wanted to ask. And so in order to facilitate time-wise, that would require to choose something to remove to then add that question. If you don't have a question and you'd rather leave it open-ended, because I do feel like any question could fit into number four. So that's why I said, hey, if you'd like, you could get specific about the question, pull four, use it in, in that. And then, because the other, I mean, the other three questions are, I think all of them are relevant questions. And I think four would actually stay the same, except you'd be very specific in the issue you wanted them to answer.
Can we add something into question two? I don't know where it would go, but here's question two. As a trustee, what do you see as your primary role? How would you fulfill your role? And how will your role as a trustee differ from an administrator's role? I don't know if this goes in there, actually, but I, for me, it's important to know, like, one of my question was, what led you to apply for this position? Because I think it's really important to know, like, oh, okay, so you want to do this job that is kind of thankless and you don't get paid. And it's a lot of meetings, like stuff I didn't know exactly. It's, it's a lot of work, like, so what was, like what, I would like to know from the, I love it though, I love it, so, I, I love it. I just know that it's not a position where, oh, you get all these accolades or something comes out of it, right? So I would just like to see, could they, what, what motivated them to apply? Like what led you to apply?
Can we add that as a sixth question? I mean, because it's brief.
I don't see it.
So in the application packet, in the application packet, that every applicant has to fill out, question number four, which is, you don't, it's not in these questions.
Okay, because I don't.
You haven't, I know you haven't looked at it.
It's sent, they, it was sent to us, yeah.
Yep.
I just saw the first page, sorry.
Hold on, that's okay.
Okay.
I'm here for you. Number four, briefly explain your reason or interest in becoming a school board member. That's a question in the packet.
But it's not number four on here.
Correct.
Okay, so there's a different number four.
We're going to have the packets, so we'll see, yeah.
Yeah, you will each have, as we, as soon as we receive them, and we do publish the whole packet, once we verify that this individual is, is registered and they're registered where they say they live in the whole bit and they're cleared, and then our subcommittee also verifies that. We'll forward all these to you in advance. They are attached to the agenda, so everyone gets to see them.
Okay.
Okay. But that's, so your question number four is already in the packet.
It's on there. Okay, perfect. Sorry, I did not read closely enough.
Nope, that's okay. That's all right. I didn't know either, that's why I quickly looked.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and, and the other thing, I think is important, no, you, right, we're going to get to review that. Did they all get the timeline as well, or?
I don't know if I've shared the timeline with everyone, but I can certainly forward the timeline to you.
Okay. And in the timeline, we'll get to review the packet.
Okay.
And then the questions come out when, when we have the panel in front, or, sorry, the applicants are going to be in front of us and then we're asking these specific questions. And whether we ask, is it required to ask all, like if we did have 15 or 20, which there seems to be a lot of interest, we could have a large number.
We could.
If we had enough time, we could ask all of them, or we could pare it down and maybe even have the applicant pick.
You could say, why don't you pick your two favorite you want to respond to?
Yeah.
Okay.
Something like that.
It just depends on how many applicants there are. And, you know, as, as Ms. Young said, this is a very important consideration for the board to make. It's worthy of, and people are investing, obviously. I mean, you know, you invested to become candidates, they're investing to become a trustee and maybe a future candidate. So it's worth giving of the time to, full consideration, right?
Okay, sorry, I'm new to this, I haven't done it before. What about, so are we going to time the questions then? So.
I recommend a time.
I think it depends on how many.
It depends on how many applicants. Okay, got it.
And I think that's a decision that can be made, right, when we're posting the agenda about that time, because then we'll know how many applicants.
Oh, so we don't need to decide right now?
No, no.
Got it.
No, because we don't know how many applicants there will be. I think at last check with Ms. Diaz, she's received one application via email.
Okay.
I don't know who, I haven't looked at the name, that's, that's what I know as of yesterday.
So they come to that, they come here and is there an audience or it's just them? They come up?
Everybody's invited.
The meeting just like this, and it will probably look a lot like this.
It's going to look just like this, they'll be.
That won't be there, probably.
I think, I don't know if we'll move that off to the side, we'll figure out some sort of configuration for them to either sit so they're comfortable. They'll come in a schedule and a time slot, even though they may be sitting in the audience, as it's their time for the interview, we'll bring them into boardroom B and then bring them forward, so they have a chance. I think, and, and Mr. Pardew and I had a nice discussion about this, after you've interviewed and heard all their responses, it then becomes a discussion opportunity for the board to discuss the applicants. Eventually, someone will want to make a motion and a second about who you'd like to see.
While they're here? We do this while they're sitting here?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I haven't done this before.
One of the things that, and I, I had suggested this and I don't know what you guys think, but we could also just think in terms of who you would prefer out of the people who, who interviewed. Each one of us might have someone that we like better than others. We could whittle it down just by each of us picking someone. And maybe we have the same person.
Yeah, during that discussion.
During that discussion, then we can have the discussion about the finalist of who's there.
So while they're.
That way we can at least kind of naturally whittle it down and each person has a say in who they would like to discuss and who they think the strongest candidate.
So we take notes while they're doing this?
Absolutely.
And then when they're done, is that when we pick the person at the end of that meeting?
We have the discussion and then we're going to have to move to appoint this person or that person needs a second, then we vote.
If, if for some reason the board can't decide.
Yeah, what happens?
We have until November 14th to make a decision, so you would have to call another meeting, schedule it, and have another special meeting to come back and finalize the process. Or if there's lots and lots of applicants and we can't even get them in all one night. Still have to get to that point. In some cases, if there is no decision that made, then it would, it would go to a special election and the board would have to say, we can't decide, therefore we're doing this. But at the moment, this is the process we have laid out. In most situations, boards do come to a conclusion about who they like to serve and please, and remember, keep in mind, the trustee is serving from now until next November. So it's a temporary, it's a, it's part of the term and there'll be, again, a special election in November to fill the last two years. So it's not a forever decision.
Yes.
And having lived this once before in a district where I had a board member step down, the board selected someone and he served for about, about eight months and then ran for election and was not reelected, so.
Okay. Wow. Well, I would just like to say good luck to anybody that applies. And yeah, that's, that's just, good to know for us, because I feel bad that people are going to leave here and, like, everybody saw who, that just one person's going to get it, so I feel kind of bad about that.
Is there any other comment around that question four?
I, I think that's what we need to kind of come to a conclusion. Are we satisfied with the questions as is?
So are these the only questions? So once we put these out and they get it on a packet, and once we all come to, is there, are these the only questions? Or if we happen to come here, something triggers a thing that says, oh, I'd like to ask this question, is that permissible?
I think introducing an entirely new question may be unfair.
Okay.
But I think a clarifying, like, could you clarify more about this?
Okay.
Would be appropriate. But inserting a whole new, out of the blue question would be kind of an unfair to each one if they're treated.
Right, they wouldn't be treated fairly, because each person, someone could have a gotcha question and someone else would get a softball question.
So. Yeah, clarifying, could you please clarify this part of your answer?
This is why tonight matters, is because then you get to decide right now, we are either, we have to approve the questions or change the questions and approve the changes to the questions.
I, I think they're fine the way they are, because we have their whole application as well, so we're going to have a lot of information on each person.
I think I'm good with these questions, Nick. Number four is very good. Let me just tell you, I think this is going to be very, just very, it's going to be great.
It's going to be interesting.
It's going to be great, it's going to be a good little, yeah. I don't have any, I mean, my question would have been, but it kind of falls under that item is four, is I want to know where people stand on the bathroom issue. So is that a question that's permissible? I want to know, do you believe in boys and girls bathrooms? Is that a question that's eligible?
As it, as it's stated.
Partisan. Why is that partisan?
Hold on, hold on. Let me, let me, let me try to explain really quick. If, if you want to have a question that's specific.
Very specific.
It is very specific.
Yeah.
Okay. So you have to decide, if that's a change you'd like to see, then that has to be changed here. You don't get to ask the question the night of. So if that's a question that, that you'd like to have on there, because that is an important issue in education right now, right? You don't get to pick, you're going to, so if the question remains, the person you're interviewing is going to have the ability to just pick their important issue.
Right.
Okay.
So I am, my recommendation then, might be overruled here, but my requesting, item four, be replaced with my question. That's my suggestion.
So the other option you have is to add a question.
Okay.
There's not, again, there's not a limit, but just, it's the timing of all of the evening, so you could also simply add a specific question.
Okay.
Could we?
If we, I know, I, my voice doesn't matter so much here, but.
Really shouldn't preface that with that, Nancy, it does matter.
Let me talk. But I'd like to stay off the partisan politics. And when you're, that's a gotcha question, I know you're going to pick somebody who's aligned with you. I'm hoping I'm wrong. If I'm wrong, I will totally say that, but that is a question to find out if somebody shares your exact political beliefs.
I, I don't know about that, Nancy. I mean, I did a whole little excerpt on our last meeting about this, about the fact that it is not a partisan issue to me, to me. And the whole reason I'm sitting on this dais is because of that question specifically.
It would help science teachers a lot if we can just kind of identify that. But let's leave that alone right now and just at least be aware that it is an important issue in education today. I think it's very relevant. One of the things I suggest as a modifier on that would be to identify, let them identify an important issue and that we recommend that, that topic as a potential answer. And they could touch it or they could not touch it.
So.
They need, if they're, we're asking somebody to identify an issue, let them identify an issue that's important to them.
Can I provide a, an opportunity?
Sure.
So the question might be, rather than say specifically like restrooms or something about that, it's like, what, like identify important issues such as, but not limited to Title IX, math instruction, reading and the science of reading, and give a couple of examples of important issues in education. And then they might, that might prompt them to something that's important to them, but it also lets the applicant share what is important to them, right? Without being, as opposed to narrowing it down to a specific, specific one. I mean, it broadens it by, like you're saying, Mr. Pardew, introducing the topic.
I can agree to that. That's pretty middle of the road, but I will still contend that that is not a partisan issue. I want to make sure that's very clear. Let the record reflect that whoever comes in to apply for the position, that is a question that will weigh on my mind and the responses, because the whole reason I'm sitting here weigh on my mind and the responses, because the whole reason I'm sitting here is because of that question. So anybody I would like to sit alongside me on this specific journey, or this leg of this, serving this term, is somebody I would like to know that believes in that in terms of common sense.
Well, we're definitely not going to agree on that, in this room, and, I mean, as it was, we had a young man assassinated, we had people walking out in protest over his memory, which hurts my soul, but it happens, and now we're talking about bathrooms, and very obvious things that you'd think everyone would agree on?
Sure, President Pardew, I agree, I will yield this to Dr. Andrews, and I, if you can please write it and articulate it, so that it expresses these very specific things, without having that, then you kind of know a stance, because apparently, I don't want people to assume that I'm automatically coming in here and seeing people are interviewing, and already have made a decision, I truly would like to know where they stand on very specific issues in education, one of which is a policy that our state is dealing with at the state level, it's being dealt at the state level, so obviously, it is going to trickle down here, and I'm a little passionate about it, please forgive me, I will, I will rein it in a little bit, I want you to know definitively where I stand, when people come into this room for this interview, this is a hyper-important situation, and a hyper-important question for me, and so if you can frame it so that it's a little more palatable, then absolutely.
I think, I think this is important, too, for, because I've had teachers who are not MAGA Republicans, or Charlie Kirk fans, or any of that other whatever extremist thing, or not normal that has been tossed around up here, that are really concerned about chaperoning events, because of the confusion about what's going on with gender, what do you do when, when you're trying to chaperon an event? There's a lot of problems with this, and as we just kind of blissfully move along and act like, oh, nothing to see here, there are plenty of places where it's become super problematic, and the district is at a huge, facing huge liability, and it's important, it's an important educational issue, to act as if it's just simply partisanship is a fool's statement, it's a huge, huge issue, and I think it's important that we at least mention Title IX, I think that's valid, and I think you had brought up a few other issues as an example, so that they.
Science of reading, class size, there's lots of things they could pick, that's important to them.
I would like to add, if we're going to add on to, is parental notification, how they feel about that, too, so. I had a question, though, can we have this question, maybe, will you be able to attend meetings in person, because our last Board member, because of their work, was not able to, and I think it's important that if you take this position, that you're able to commit to coming in person? Of course, if there's emergencies or whatnot, but that.
She had a couple of business conflicts, twice, that wasn't implied that she wasn't coming at all.
Oh, no, I didn't say that, I just mean, she had to, she had to, for work, she had to miss a lot for work, so it's just better if we could have.
Yeah, question number twelve.
Oh, gosh, is that on there? Okay.
It, it says, can you commit to attending Board meetings, yes or no?
Okay, thank you, see, I need the whole document, I just have one page, but, thank you.
I think, there's a lot in the packet, I think we need to try to clarify that, that question, I think it's question number four, maybe just have some examples in there.
I think so.
Yeah, some examples.
And if you have, I, I think we do need to vote on that change, though, so maybe let's clarify exactly what language or which issue you'd like to be there, and then we can vote, and if there's.
Is this a voting item, like, we actually have to say, these are our recommendations?
It is not a.
It's a discussion.
It's a discussion.
Yeah.
But to give you advice, because we might not all agree on all of the.
I think the questions should all be under the actual purview of a school board, because everybody has their personal beliefs, and you can advocate on your personal time, but when we get into issues that are not under the purview of the school board, it ends up wasting a lot of public funds on lawsuits, so I think we should stay away from it.
And I totally agree with that, but the, the issue is purviewed, that is completely under our purview, that my son, or my daughter, in a high school, or in kindergarten currently, is allowed to go into a public space, public bathroom, with another person of the opposite sex, so that, that, that happens in our schools, did you know that? That actually happens here in our district? That is part of our purview. Ms. Young, listen, I came to you at the very beginning of this Board journey, and I said that the issues that we can work together with, that I would love to work together with you on, the fact that you keep bringing this up again, about the partisanship of my, my stance, is, like I said, it's getting really tired, but I want to work with this, I want to know who I'm going to work with on this dais, and what they stand for, that's important to me, so you cannot dismiss me saying this stuff, that it's not part of our purview, that, that really is starting to anger me now, because how can kids not be in our purview? How can their safety, how can their emotional, mental health, you're very big on mental health, which I'm very grateful for, how can their mental health not be brought into consideration as part of our purview?
I'm just saying, we have to follow the law.
Correct, and that law.
A lot of what's been happening here has not been legal.
That, that is incorrect, that is incorrect.
Let's just say this out loud, the Title IX issues, there's federal law, there's state law, they're in conflict, and that's why we filed the Hammockus Brief, actually, to just say where we stand on that. I will agree with you on one point, which is, there's a lot of things I'm interested in the Board, because there are so many legal issues that are going to, that are outside of our control, and so there's only so much we can do, but understanding where your perspective is on some of these other issues might be more important, in, in my view, but at the same time, Ms. Briggs has a valid point, one of the questions might be helpful to hear what they think about that.
Title IX is the federal education law as it relates to gender and opportunities, so it very much does, so such things that has been discussed and mentioned, because I've heard, back to your comment, Mr. Pardew, about what would be listed, I have four items listed, two are the ones that I suggested, and the other ones you read upon. Title IX, parents' rights, we have a Parents' Rights and Responsibilities page, it's part of all the different, there's a lot of parents' rights, and we've talked about responsibilities, I know it's what Mrs. Murray was talking about, math instruction's important to the district, to the Board, science of reading is something, it's a journey that we are, like I was mentioning in my comment, we are doing it, and it's been great, so those are four items that are within the jurisdiction of the Board.
All right, is everyone in, feel good about those issues? Nancy, are you okay with the questions?
I would like every question to be politically neutral, if they, if you can do that, and it's politically neutral, I'm okay with it.
I will do my best.
Okay.
Not a gotcha thing, to make sure, I mean, you guys are, I mean, even if this person doesn't agree with you one hundred percent, you're going to outvote them anyway, and me, so.
That's not true, Nancy, I don't agree with you a hundred percent, and you're still sitting here.
Let's just say, there's, there's been a lot of.
I don't understand that, I don't understand why we have to battle this every time.
Well, one of the things that I think is really important, is, is there's been a lot of bad behavior all the way around, and I think that it's important to, we can't sit here as if we have clean hands in the issue. What I feel like we should be a little bit proud of, as Myriad, at the very least, is that we generally don't have discussions that go this long, and run over to, like, eleven o'clock, and have multiple meetings, and, and all the stuff that we see in other districts. So I'd love for us, as a community, to try to limit that from happening, with that being said, these are very important issues for our community, and, and so, I'm in favor of it, of those changes, and I'd love for us to, to be able to move on from that.
So I, in this week's update, I'll be able to provide that to you for any final comment, but these will also be part, they'll be made available to the applicant, so everyone will have it ahead of time, so there's no surprises. And again, during the, the course of the interview, you can ask a clarifying question based on a comment, we, just, but please do not, I think, I think we'll be, be not a good look to introduce something new out of the blue.
Yes.
Stick to the questions.
Yes, help questions. Okay, with that being said, I call for a motion to adjourn the Board of Education meeting at seven oh nine PM.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, hearing none, or adjourned?